Okay, I have six o'clock. Our call to order the study session for the city of Cherry Hills Village. It's Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. On the study session agenda tonight is tree mitigation. And I think Planning Manager Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's nice to be here before you. Steph's bringing forward this topic to you at study session at the request of City Council for discussion and direction related to the city's existing tree mitigation regulations. Before we get too far into it, I do want to highlight the existing... Oh, Laura. Sorry. There we go. I do want to highlight for you the existing regulations. Those were provided in your packet for this evening. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail. I would also mention that not every community does have a tree mitigation or preservation ordinance, but we are one that does have that. The tree mitigation requirements were first adopted back in 2011. They were the result of the Residential Development Standards Committee report that was from September of 2009. I'm sure most of you know of or remember that, but that predates my time. The concern at that time is a lot of the concerns that council has heard here in the last year or so is that there's concern that the removal of trees would result in a loss of privacy, a loss of home value, a change in the character of the streets, and a loss of overall aesthetic in the village. So back in 2011, these regulations were put into place. They do apply to all residentially zoned property. And they apply primarily in two scenarios. And they apply to the area of the lot that's between the property line and the primary structure setback line. So if it's within what we call the building envelope, within the building setbacks, mitigation's not required. And those two scenarios where it applies is with the construction or the development of a new home, or with the major addition, or more than 50% square footage being added to a home. Or the third one is within 12 months preceding the submission of a permit for either of those two. So again, I'm not going to go through, but those are the highlights of generally when these mitigation requirements apply. I would also note that Steph did some initial research into other tree preservation regulations, and we were unable to find any true apples-to-apples comparisons. Most of the other ones that we took a look at apply primarily to a multifamily or other non-residential development. Steph was unable to find any regulations that solely applied to single-family development like we have here in Cherry Hills Village. Additionally, just to inform council that the language that was adopted in 2011 was also part of the code modernization that occurred in 2019. There was some reformatting of how that language was written, but there was no changes to the requirements as part of the code modernization. So before we get into some potential options that council may want to consider, and I'm not going to read these line by line, but with any land use regulation, right, it's a balance, and there's perceived pros and perceived cons to regulation. For example, preservation of an existing tree canopy may also result in the blockage of views, which we've heard through our master plan process is important to members of the community. And so I present this slide really to focus on that last line item there. What really is at the crux of the issue for council is the balance of community character and additional regulation on private property rights. And so that's really what we're trying to get at here. So these are not the only three options. Within these options, there's probably 10 or 15 other options. But some umbrella options for council would be to make no changes to the existing regulations. The third kind of bigger umbrella would be to modify the existing regulations to make them more or less restrictive based on council's direction. And the third would be to direct staff to do some detailed research on other similar regulations and come back before this body with new mitigation requirements that would either be more or less restrictive, again, depending on council's direction. Should also be noted that there are times where, in practicality, trees should be removed. Some examples are if a tree is within a site distance triangle and creates a safety issue. Trees that are located in utility easements where there's utilities and the vegetation may damage those utilities. Dead or diseased trees, that's another option or opportunity as well. There are certain invasive species that can become a nuisance. And there's also species that are susceptible to infestation, like an ash tree. And I don't know if you've all heard, the emerald ash borer up and down the front range, killing the ash species. There's a lot of communities that just flat-out prohibit the planting of any new ash trees. So the first one, again, I'm not going to go through each of these pros and cons. They're more illustrative than anything. What I would offer is that a potential pro or a potential con may be both, depending on who you ask. Some folks may see, you know, a potential con as also being a pro. But the first option is to do nothing and to leave the existing tree mitigation requirements in place. The second option would be to make modifications to the existing regulations. Just by way of example, council may want to direct that we revise the language so that the tree mitigation requirement applies to all trees that are removed, not just those in the setback. Council may be interested in applying tree mitigation to any tree that's removed regardless if it's associated with construction or not. Again, council may determine that it applies to all trees, just not those trees with the DBH stands for diameter at breast height, and so that's the diameter of the tree basically at six foot. And then, or council could say, we only want it to apply to significant trees, and to us, significant trees are those trees that are 10 inches or more at diameter at breast height. So those are just some examples. Again, not necessarily advocating for that. There are just some examples to spark a discussion with council. The other would be to direct staff to do some detailed research on some other communities and draft new language for council consideration. If this is the direction council would like to go as staff, we would just request some general direction in terms of what council may be most interested in, whether that's what is a significant tree versus what's not a significant tree, or how, you know, how many caliper... Is it a one-to-one caliper replacement? Whereas now, it's not, right? If you have a small tree, which is over six but less than 10, you're required to do two inches caliper of a replacement. Does council want to go to a more one-to-one approach where if you remove a seven-inch tree, you have to replace it with a seven-inch tree? So those are some of the things that if you're looking in doing some more research and truly overhauling the tree mitigation requirements, that's some of the direction we'd be looking for. And so that is my very brief presentation, but I do want to open it up for questions that council may have, or really, I'm really interested in the feedback and the discussion in terms of what, if any amendments, council may be interested in.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify one thing. While the last option definitely involves staff going back and doing some additional research, even the second option will still require staff to go back and do some additional work. There's nothing really for... There's nothing teed up for council to necessarily pick that option or that specific regulation. So I just want to manage expectations that this is really just trying to test the waters and see if this is something you want staff to go back and do additional work. No matter which option you pick, it would require us to go back and do work, assuming unless you picked the first option, which is keep the existing regulations.
Council, Dan?
Thanks. Couple of questions for you, Paul. I'm surprised that our existing tree mitigation requirements mandate that it's a minimum of two inch and a maximum of a two-and-a-half inch.
That's correct.
I mean, it doesn't seem like a very big swath there for somebody to go replace trees. If they've got 20... Say they have 30 inches of trees in aggregate that they need to go replace, they've got to do 15 twos or whatever the equivalent of two-and-a-halves would be?
That's correct. And I will say, just in professional experience, it's odd to have a maximum tree size to plant.
I think we should look at that because frankly, if I were a homeowner and I was purposefully and thoughtfully taking out a whole bunch of trees, not in the development pad, but in the setbacks, I'd like to be able to replace them with 20 or 30-foot trees that would actually have some immediate impact on shade and, you know, just aesthetics. I would think that we'd want to be able to allow for bigger caliper trees to be put in. So I think we should explore that first. I have another question about the... When mitigation's required, the three bullet points on our written staff communication call out development of a new home, 50% expansion of an existing home, or within 12 months preceding the date in which a building permit is applied for.
Correct.
How do you calculate that? I mean, if I go buy a lot and I'm not sure when I'm going to go pull my building permit, it's like we're solving for something that you don't know when that person's going to pull the building permit. Therefore, how do I know I need to go do the tree mitigation?
I will say that that regulation is particularly difficult to enforce. And we've all seen the experience over there at Quincy and Franklin where those trees were cut down. And if they are outside of 12 months, then there's no mitigation requirement. And so I think you've highlighted a particular flaw with the existing regulations. But I don't know that I have a good answer for you, other than to say that tracking that is extremely difficult from a day-to-day logistical perspective.
Yeah. And I thought I also heard you say, under your options in your PowerPoint, that there weren't a whole lot of other jurisdictions that had tree mitigation requirements.
Specifically for single-family residential. A lot of communities have tree mitigation or tree preservation requirements that apply to like a new multi-lot subdivision development. Multifamily or non-residential development. In the research we did, there was nothing that said, if you remove a tree from a single-family home, here is what you're required to do.
So the option three, I think it was, where you said, you know, you'd go back and do some time-intensive research about other jurisdictions. I mean, you don't really have any other pool of jurisdictions to look at for a similar case scenario as ours.
What we would probably do is we'd probably expand that research from just the Denver metro area to other kind of more primarily that are more comparable to Cherry Hills Village. When we did this analysis, it was looking at front range communities here in Colorado. We'd probably look at some other communities across the nation.
Okay. That's all my comments and questions for now, other than the fact that I do know that PTRC Commissioner Fred Wolf's here, and I know that he wants to speak on this matter. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to recognize if we have time to have him speak.
We should have time.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown?
So that was my question as well. The maximum size seemed very peculiar to me. If I'm just landscaping my yard, I can put in whatever size tree I want. But all of a sudden, if I'm adding on, I can't. And I, you know, I start to think of a kind of my own personal situation. I still have my tree, but I have fought Excel every five years to keep my tree. And I would have to put in five trees? Remember where I live, right? I don't have... There's not space for five trees if Excel forces me to cut down that tree. So I think that maybe there is some tweaking that we have to do. But ultimately, I think in terms of large-scale changes, I, like everyone else, was very dismayed by the several instances of, you know, loss of beautiful, what I consider to be beautiful trees that contribute to the character of Cherry Hills Village. But in the end, people do own their own properties, and they do have the right... They have extensive rights, in fact, to do what they want with their property. A lot of Cherry Hills Village is covered by HOAs, not all. My neighborhood is not. Someone could paint their house bright pink, and I would be dismayed by that as well, and there would be absolutely nothing I could do about it. Because it's their home, and they have the right to enjoy their home the way that they see fit. It is impossible for us to sit here and anticipate every situation that would arise, every reason that someone would have for wanting to remove a particular tree. You know, we looked into getting solar panels on our house, and they told us we were going to have to cut down all our trees. We said, no, thank you, but other people might make a different judgment. Solar electricity might seem to be more important to them, that that's their choice. So we can't anticipate all of those things. I feel like this ordinance, because I was on council at the time, walked a very delicate line. And I feel that... I feel that the balance that we have struck is fair. It's not ideal probably for people on either side of the issue, but I think that it's fair. I do think we should consider removing the maximum size. But other than that, I think I'm pretty comfortable with it the way that it is. And, you know, I'm sorry that there are unfortunate cases where, you know, there are real losses for the community, but c'est la vie. Same thing when people decide to subdivide their 15-acre properties. That's their right, so.
Councilor Will?
Thank you. I'm probably in a little different place in that I think many other communities don't have tree mitigation code, but they probably aren't all... They probably also don't have a master plan that uses words like semi-bucolic and rural and things like that as frequently as ours does. I think that's a part, a real material part of Cherry Hills Village and living in Cherry Hills Village. So I'm probably a little more expansive in my thinking about, you know, for two reasons. One, because I think it really is key to the character of the neighborhood, and it's our job to protect that, our collective job code, et cetera, you know, to protect that. And secondly, I find a certain... It's not logical to me why there's this regulation only at a time of construction or expansion of a property. Yes, there's a higher probability of trees being displaced in those circumstances. On the other hand, you know, I mean, I hate to go back to our friends at Franklin and Quincy, but, you know, a vacant lot counts too to the character and the aesthetic of the neighborhood, as does a built lot, which could... I mean, heck, I think it was about 40 years ago, Mr. T bought a property in Lake Forest and whacked all the trees down, caused huge uproar because Lake Forest, as well as suburb of Chicago, with a very distinct character and aesthetic, somewhat similar to ours. You know, it's... I can't come across... I can't process the logic in why we wouldn't want to protect the character of the neighborhood at times other than during construction. And one final thought. There's a question in my mind about this whole business of removing a tree. I mean, it would have been great if they'd have left the trees alone. It would have been not good, but maybe less offensive if they had cut the trees down and ground the stumps and made it look like an open field. But having a bunch of stumps with a bunch of growth and so on... What is the definition of remove trees? Or should we be more specific about the definition of remove trees? You know, stumps, et cetera. I don't think we want a bunch of stumps around the neighborhood as well. Yeah, those... Yeah, and I agree with the other comment about the maximum. I think we should leave that open. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilor Savvy?
So I'm not in any way, form, or shape a tree mitigation expert. So for me, you know, I can't tell you option A, B, or make any particular comment. Those will be my personal opinion based on me, which is not an expert. So, and by the way, I'll give you an example. In one of my properties, I planted a bunch of small trees, which I forgot that a small tree has become big trees. So all of a sudden, you have to go and cut 10 of them because they're so... They're basically all killing each other, right? I mean, there's so many examples that one can go hundreds of them, right? So for me, I'm leaning toward the option that you try to make it at least easier from my look at it, that you're going to go do research and come back and tell us what are the best practices, maybe not the best practice. What are the practices from other jurisdiction and other cities? What are they doing in terms of their tree mitigation? So for me, again, I'm not qualified to sit here and tell you what to do or what not to do. Two-and-a-half inch, three inches, five inches? I don't know what is the right number. I can logically speak as what might make sense. So, you know, I'm leaning more toward giving guys extra work to go and actually come back and tell me, tell us, as what are some of the best practices out there. So that's all.
Mr. Wolf, would you like to?
Thank you. I wasn't planning on saying anything on this subject tonight because I've said those same remarks before. Fred Wolf, I'm chairman of PTRC right now, and I've lived here for 33 years, okay? Everything I've heard tonight is missing the point. I'm not arguing about caliper. I'm not arguing about Katie's comments. If you buy a property, you can do anything you want with that property. You can take down any tree you want. As difficult as that is for all of us to look at Quincy and Franklin, which I drive by every day countless times, I live on South Franklin Street. It's... The issue is timing. Timing. How can somebody cut down trees and then nothing happens for over a year? Nothing. My suggestion, which I've told Paul before about, is that if you want to cut down your trees within the building envelope as well as in the setbacks, you should only be able to do that within 30 days of breaking ground on your house. So that we don't live with Quincy and Franklin for over a year and just looking at how that property was just raped of gorgeous 30-inch diameter trees. And they just take them all down in one slot, and then nothing happens. In fact, the people who bought that property, they could decide, we're going to sell it. We're not going to build. And we start the whole thing all over again. That's all I'm saying. You know, the caliper issue, it's kind of crazy to think you cut down a 30-inch tree and then you have to plant 15 two-inch trees, some... You know, it's hard to... It's hard to make that count somehow with me. And to think that they cut all the trees down on the perimeter that were actually part of the canopy over South Franklin... part of the canopy over South Franklin Street. Everybody over there just scratches their heads and thinks, "How can the village allow that?" So, I'm suggesting that Paul and the staff, all of these things they put together are fine, but none of them has anything to do with timing. And I'd love to hear, Dan, and your comments about what do you think if we made language amendments to the building code that said, "Okay, you're going to take down trees." "We know when you intend to break ground." "You can only take down the trees within 30 days out from that date." And then we don't have this situation that we have to all live with. I mean, I don't know how many of you live over in that part of Old Cherry Hills, but everybody over there is just fit to be tied. Now, on another subject, I will tell you that every time I come to a meeting like this, the level of apathy in Cherry Hills never ceases to amaze me. The number of people that have talked to me because of PTRC and said, "Oh, how can you allow that? This is crazy." And then I look around and Tori Levington back there is on PTRC with me. But where is everybody? Where's everybody that's so upset about this? That's, anyway. Do you have any questions on what I have?
I don't have a question, but I think you raise a really good point. And to your point, Dan, about the 12 months, you know, I have no idea what the motivations at that particular property were, but I can see how the 12-month requirement would also, would actually create a situation where we're stuck with lots that are, you know, in that state for 12 months because people want to try to avoid the mitigation requirements. The timing issue, you know, and I think, I like your suggestion of 30 days before. The problem is that it's, you know, you're backing up from a date that doesn't exist yet and, so I think you raise a good point. I'm not sure that the 30 days before works either because if you don't, so I cut down all my trees, I'll just use my house as an example, and then I decide, "I'm not going to put that addition on anymore anyway." And now I don't have to replace them at all and, ultimately, people can cut down their trees if they want to cut them down, like.
Yeah. I have a, we're running out of time, but I have a different thought in this, sort of similarly yours, which is, originally, this was addressed at a very particular issue, which we had speculative builders coming in, buying up houses and taking out the trees because it was easier for them to take them out to build a new house, right? And they didn't care because they weren't going to live there. So that's really what this was aimed at. It was that, you were asking, "Why did we do it that way?" That very situation. But we always thought at that time, and I think now, that the real issue is kind of timing, but I think it's really communication. I think if we could talk to these people before they actually took out the trees, we'd have a good shot at saying, "Don't do," you know, "That doesn't make a lot of, that doesn't make a lot of sense to do it now. Don't do that." And you're, you know, the value of those trees is far greater, you know, there's no need to, let's talk about it. So I think it's, I'd like to look at a way we could develop a code so it required people to come in and talk to us, not necessarily to take their property, but actually just to talk to us and talk it through before they actually do that. You know, they were in there so fast, I don't know if it would have been possible. If there's some way to say to them, you know, in a code saying, "Before you take out old growth, before you take out old growth trees, you add a permit," or something like that. And it'd be granted, but you got to talk to us first and you got to talk, you know, and see what makes sense. Because what we found is, in those lots that the speculators have been on the lots on, the people who bought those homes would have liked to have the old growth, they would have preferred to have the old trees there, right? But there are also the other issues that Ashton talked about too. I mean, in our community now in the Buell, we have too many trees. So we can't have a thing eliminating, taking out trees because our problem is there's too many, they're too close, and blue spruce grow a lot bigger than, they're nice little, you know, dainty things when you plant them and they turn out to be huge, right? So you can't do that to, that's why it didn't apply to existing homes because people need to take out their trees. But I think, I think there's something here. I think there's something here of simply requiring people to come in and talk to us and identifying the issue, flagging the issue to avoid that kind of thing is the best course. Because there are legal issues about how much, you can't take their property. You know, if you want to take the trees, we could, we could do eminent domain. We could say, "You can't take those trees, we have to pay them for them," right? But that's not what anybody is doing.
Well, as, when somebody submits their building plans for a home, is a landscape plan part of that submission?
So the city doesn't have landscape requirements, so we don't require a landscape plan per se, but we do require a tree mitigation plan where they're required to show us where all the existing trees are and any trees that will be removed, and if they meet the criteria, they're required to show us how they're going to demonstrate compliance with the mitigation requirements.
So these folks at Quincy and Franklin did submit a tree mitigation plan and you saw that they were going to take out 36 trees?
To my knowledge, they have not submitted a building permit.
They just took the property and they cut down their trees.
Right.
And I think one thing, I think one thing we need to keep in mind, and I know we're about out of time, but as far as I know, in the six years I've been on council, this is the first time I've really heard of this really egregious example of this. And so I don't want to, I don't want to poo-poo this, but if it's a one-time occurrence that, I'm not sure it warrants tweaking our code, a massive overhaul of the code. I just don't know if it's, if it's not broken and this one instance maybe was as a, you know, offshoot of what's normal, then maybe we don't tweak the code. And I'm just thinking out loud here.
Well, I hope you're right, Dan. I hope it is a one-off. This is an extreme situation.
I agree.
That has got everybody.
It does feel to me like perhaps focusing on the vacant lot issue might still have some merit. The person isn't living there. They don't have to live with the consequences of what they're doing. It's all the rest of us, particularly those that live close by. And I, yeah, I understand property rights, but at the same time, there are many restrictions on what I can do with my, with my property and to have a situation like this just seems to me to be something that's, yeah, maybe it's one-off, but what if it's two-off, you know, and so on. I mean, I, I think it deserves some time to.
I got to cut it short because it's 6:31 and, Steve Banter?
So I guess I would just ask council, I'm not hearing a clear consensus of next steps on this particular issue and staff certainly wants to meet the needs of city council, so. Is there, is council?
Well, I think there's a clear consensus about we can change the Caliper. There's no reason to.
I'm sorry, you're right on that. I totally agree with you. I just didn't know if there were.
So why don't you bring that forward? If we bring that forward, then we can just have any further discussions along with that amendment to the ordinance, which we'll have to go through two readings too, right?
I mean, I'll just ask council to keep in mind whether it's a year or three years out or 30 days out. At the end of the day, if we're still not requiring that they actually do it no matter what, which I don't think we can to the mayor's point. I mean, it would result in a taking if we did change that. If we don't change that, the timeline is somewhat irrelevant. You go longer than a year and our ability to track it, it becomes a farce, really. I mean, it becomes impossible. So I just ask council to keep in mind, the concepts behind it are one thing. The practicality of enforcing these is completely different sometimes, so.
No, I agree with that. I also, so I agree with changing the maximum size. I don't feel that I need any information about what other people are doing, but I do like, I do agree with Russell that an opportunity to just talk to somebody and say, "Gosh, are you sure? All your neighbors are going to hate you," like, whatever the conversation is. And there is also, you know, when you're removing very large trees, there are safety issues with surrounding properties and so is there, is there something that just says, you know, "We need to be notified"? Is it a permit? Is it a, I'm not sure, but, you know, before you remove a tree of greater than this size, you need to do this?
Sure. And what else?
Quick comment. Look, I think we're going and repeating all, you know, what we said earlier, so I'm going to repeat what I said, which is, I still think, before we know it, a lot of these houses are going to start doing renovation. A lot of the houses that the trees have, they have planted more trees than these, some of these lots can handle in some of the neighborhoods. They're going to start cutting them down. So I want to see personally, you know, what are the practices that are happening out there with other jurisdiction so we can actually come up and be ahead of what will happen in the future. By the way, the two-inch, you know, restriction, probably they put it in there because they, at least they try to prevent people to go cut these old, big, giant trees, to say that if I cut this, now I have to go and plant 15, 15 small trees. So there was probably some reason behind it. And again, I'm not an expert and I don't think anybody on this panel is an expert, so I suggest we should go and actually see what are the best practices out there and bring it to us and let's have a discussion.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly, and just very quickly to Councilwoman Brown's point is, we can definitely explore some language about requiring conversations and letting folks know and doing that kind of stuff. We can definitely do that.
Great. All right, I do have to cut it short because it is, I have 6:35, 6:34. So we'll move out of the study session and I will call to order the regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council for Tuesday, July 19th. I have 6:35. Let's have a roll call, please.
Counselor Savaby?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher is absent. Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum is absent.
If we could all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience participation. Mr. Wolf, I assume you're okay, are you okay? Good. And Tori? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and greetings fellow residents, neighbors, and city staff. I am inspired by Dr. Seuss's book, The Lorax. I speak for the trees or the trees have no tongues. And I do have ethical issues with tree ownership. I mean, the stuff that they absorb and the stuff they put out affects us all, so to say, "These are my trees" is somewhat of an ethical question. Are they? I don't know. All right, but here's what I came here to say. Hereby propose a wilderness initiative to the city of Cherry Hills Village, its residents, and all other interested parties. The intent is to honor the city charter and maintain our lands as natural. According to federal statute, wilderness areas shall be devoted to the public purposes of recreational, scenic, scientific, educational, conservation, and historical use. That is the statute. Wilderness is further defined by a complete lack of permanent roads or structures, commercial activity, nor the use of motorized vehicles or equipment. However, like all ideas, the one we term wilderness means whatever we collectively want it to mean. There's a little, there's virtually no precedent defining the minimum size of attractive land to be designated as wilderness. All efforts would be entirely voluntary, both privately and publicly. Six recommendations for this proposal. Leave property corners wild. There's no need, in my opinion, to run off to the corner of your, nobody's, no, I can't say it enough. Leave the corners wild. Replace solid interior fences with wildlife-friendly passing. Reach border agreements with neighbors favoring wilderness. Remove litter everywhere if safe and sanitary, even if it is not your own. Thank you so much to Mr. Wolf. He is, I'm so thankful that, I'm not alone in that one. Adding a sensitive wildlife area or slow wildlife crossings signage where appropriate. We do have deer, bobcats, and many other wildlife species that come through our property and I speak for the trees. Last one would be a very long-term goal, and that's a construction of wildlife overpasses and/or underpasses to reduce roadkill and facilitate local species mobility. Okay. The Paris Climate Accords, the Convention on Biological Diversity, and the UN Sustainable Development Goals, all set a goal of 30% of land conservation by 2030. While we are probably already above that goal considering private land management, implementing a similar standard for the village in statute would be beneficial for many reasons. And this might include prohibiting the removal of more than 2/3 of trees for any new land development or similarly requiring an offset expectation with reforestation somewhere else within the city. And this is just what you guys were talking about, so that's another direction to go. This is a wilderness proposal. I'm using my own property of 3.7 acres as a potential model for the city and other jurisdictions to offer guidance for governments and private land owners to balance their property. 30% built, 30% mixed-use, 30% wilderness, and 10% flexible. It's called the 30-30-30-10 Plan. I did not come up with this, but I'm going to try to live by it. Mom, so to talk about it, this is, looks like a, I was very rushed to do this. It looks rudimentary and it is my first draft. Here's my rectangular plot. I have set aside approximately 30% of land that we are not going to maintain, that we are deliberately going to leave as wild as we can, which is going to amount to about 1.2 acres of quote-unquote "wild areas." And lastly, most importantly, wilderness is an idea of balance, a paradox, of simultaneous control and chaos. Wildlife and weather refuse compliance with our wishes and demands. No millennium nor age has witnessed a human's mastery over their environment. "In wildness is the preservation of the world," Henry David Thoreau. Please contact me with any information or ideas regarding these projects. I thank you all for your hard work, responsible citizenship, and devoted stewardship to the sacred lands of Cherry Hills Village.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Levington. We appreciate it. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Tori, you know what that reminds me of? You've seen Back to the Future, I'm sure, where he reveals the model and he says, "I'm sorry, I didn't have time to build it to scale or to paint it." That's totally what that reminded me of. You have a map that you put together. It doesn't have to be built to scale or painted.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Tori. Any other, next item on the agenda is reports from city boards, commissions, or committees. We heard from PTRC, don't see anyone else here. And then consent agenda. Anybody, any item to be removed?
I'd like to remove item 6B, please.
Great. Can I have a motion on 6A?
I move to approve consent agenda item 6A.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
6A is adopted and 6B?
6B, I just, as most of you know, whenever there's a donation, I like to make sure that we publicly thank those people rather than have it just go unnoticed as part of the consent agenda. So I wanted to formally thank Kathy Finger, who has served on the Art Commission for many, many years, has been a resident of Cherry Hills for so long, and such a generous donation in this piece of Winter Park Morning. So thank you to the Fingers for that contribution and with that, I move that we approve, or that we accept the donation of art from, of Winter Park Morning from Kathy Finger.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Brown, thank you, Ms. Finger, Finger family. Next item, unfinished business. 8A, which is Public Affairs Consultant Final Report. City Manager Kramer, you have the floor.
This item tonight is, really represents the culmination of our contract with Mr. Blakely. But as, as we've talked about in here before, tonight is really setting the table as well for the next couple of council meetings where council can consider alternatives related to potential ballot language or ballot measures at all related to the sales tax issue, remote seller sale. remote seller, sales tax issue that we've been discussing. So this will be the first of three consecutive council meetings where we get the lovely attendance of Mr. Blakely. So I'll turn it over to him for, for his final report to you that really culminates this phase of this process.
Thank you. My first thing I noticed, I may have sent you the wrong PowerPoint. I, I thought I changed the front slide to say final report. So. Well, let's see what the next slide is. How many slides are there? It's the wrong one. I sent you the wrong one. I apologize. I am so sorry. Guess it's a good thing I did this at the end of the project.
Yeah, let's see how long, can you, do you think you'll have it there to bring up, or should we move to eight B?
I'm going to have it, I'll have it to her in just a few seconds. Yeah, it says final report in the file name. I just sent it to you again. Okay. So what I want to walk through tonight is just, again, a little bit of a recap of what, what we implemented during the project, kind of what we've been doing during the education phase of the campaign since the research piece ended, and then talk about next steps, kind of where we go from here.
Great.
So the first slide you will see, just kind of recaps what the three issues were. Then I must not have changed the first slide, because, because there should only be five slides. Yeah. I just, did you see the email? Did that come through?
If you have your slides, Kyle, you can just talk through it, and then Laura can catch up.
The first thing is just kind of a. Okay, all right, sorry. The, so the first slide, just to kind of recap what the three issues were that we researched in the, from the very beginning. One was the remote sellers internet sales tax language issue, the construction materials use tax, and then the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Fund redistribution. So those were the things that we researched first, and the process that we went through then. We included the stakeholder interviews with all of you and several other folks in the community, eighteen total. We did two focus groups with residents, a total of eighteen participants in those two groups. And then we did the community survey with the assistance of Wilson, or WPA, and we got seventy-five responses from that element. So combining all of those things, we then, kind of the key findings from each one. Obviously, we, we, the, we looked at that first issue, the remote sellers internet sales tax issue, in all three research phases. And there was clearly support in all three areas. And so the recommendation was to put that on the ballot for this November, and we'll get into more of that here in a little bit. The construction materials use tax, there was mixed support. We researched it in all three phases of the, of the research. It was confusing in a lot of cases, and the recommendation was to not put it on the ballot right now. But at some point in the future, if it's needed, it's probably worth revisiting at some point. And then the last one, then, the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Fund redistribution, there was very little support for that in the stakeholder interviews and the focus groups, and so we didn't even include it in the survey, and just the recommendation was not to go forward with that. So from that, then, with the one issue going on the ballot, or hopefully, or potentially going on the ballot this November, we embarked on an education campaign. And almost all of you have participated in this in some way. Randy's been chairing the committee, but really appreciate kind of the support and help you guys have given. We started by developing the frequently asked questions and kind of key points surrounding the issue. Laura created a page on the city's website with details about the issue and the FAQs. We made thirteen presentations to community groups. And then there's two other groups in there that we sent information to, and they're sending it out to their members because they didn't have a meeting coming up. Most of those were homeowners associations, but we also had the Parks Committee. Perfect, perfect. So, and then the, the Land, Cherry Hills Land Preserve was also one of the groups in there. So felt like, you know, with those thirteen presentations, you know, we, I think we probably got in front of close to a hundred people. I mean, a lot of the HOAs were small boards and things like that. Then we had the town hall meeting here on June twenty-first, and the first portion of that, I think we had about twenty people in the audience who came for that. We published information in the Crier in the last two issues. And then we outlined some social media messages that Laura programmed, and spent really that effort, again, trying to direct people to the city's website for more information. We sent a press release to The Villager announcing the town hall meeting. This week, we're, I think it's this week, we're sending out a postcard to residents, just reminding them that you're going to be considering this issue in August. And then we also recruited volunteers for the campaign committee. Again, Randy's chairing the committee. Mike's not here. Mike got the MVP award for recruiting the most people to the committee. I think out of, we have like ten people on the committee, and I think he recruited seven of them at least. So he did, he jumped in there and helped a lot. So I feel like the committee's in a good position going forward if you guys decide to put this on the ballot. So the next steps, again, the next two meetings are when this will be discussed here, discussing the ballot language. And then, if approved, that's when the city can no longer allocate resources for resident education around the issue, and that's when the campaign committee would need to take over managing the campaign. And so from that, we start by filing the paperwork to establish the campaign committee. We'll be setting up weekly meetings of the group, have to set up a bank account, and then work on fundraising. I think we've already kind of outlined a campaign plan, and with a budget and everything, so the committee will be taking that on. We'll have a website, because the city's website can just have the factual information about the issue. There will be a campaign website that would be advocating for the issue if it goes on. Again, probably going back and talking to some of the same community groups, but trying to reach out again to all the ones that we weren't able to get something scheduled with, to reach as many people as possible. I think canvassing, kind of a grassroots effort, is going to be important during this campaign. So we're hoping the committee and some volunteers will be willing to put on their walking shoes and go door-to-door and talk to voters about it. The budget, or the plan includes a couple of direct mail pieces to voters, and then probably utilize some limited digital advertising to reach those. We are going to be able to pull a voter file that shows us who are the likely voters in the community. So those are the ones we'll really be focusing on. And then all of that leads up to then Election Day on November eighth. So that's kind of the, the scope of what we have planned from here. So does anybody have any questions or thoughts or comments at this point?
Just have one question. I caught you a few times under the next step saying "we", and I just want to make sure, the "we" does not include you or your firm anymore, right? If we choose to move this forward, the committee now takes it over. Your firm is now not working for the, you don't continue to work for the committee, do you, or do you?
I, I do manage political campaigns as part of what I do in my job.
But to be clear, we had. The committee chose to extend the contract.
The committee would have to hire me. It would be a separate contract, other than the work I do for the city.
Okay. The last remaining scope of item, scope of services for this contract with the city is really going to just be assisting us through the ballot language conversations. He'll just be sitting in the audience and. But, but as far as the, he's provided a report to us tonight that we are, really, in a lot of ways wraps up a majority of the scope of contract with the city.
Understood. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Councillor Brown? I, I had a, one question. How, what's the process for getting the language or getting the explanation in the ballot, in the, in the blue book? I suppose it's going to be, how does that work in your experience?
There's, I, I know, Laura, at one point you had mentioned what the deadline was for submitting that. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Yeah, all of those Tabor Blue Book deadlines are in September, so anyone can send pro-con statements in to me, and then I have to summarize them for more hundred, no more than five hundred words each for pro and con. And then the city has its own notice that's very regulated by state statute. What we have to put in is, with all the finance information, year one, year two, all of that. So we'll be working on that internally.
So we can't, so the city, yeah, so, so the pros are going to come from the committee?
Yes.
The cons presumably from anybody who's opposed, I suppose.
Yes.
And that was kind of the other, I would be interested in knowing any reaction to those who are opposed. I don't want to speak to the choir, because I guess my experience has been a lot, a lot of people are supportive that I've talked to. But if, if you do hear of people who are opposed to it, I'd like to know, because I like to talk to them, and that maybe. I, I do think that you've gotten probably the community leaders, I mean, but, but you haven't, we haven't even begun to scratch the surface of the vote, of all the voters in our village. Most people have no idea this is coming, so.
Absolutely.
On to Fred Wolf's point, right?
Yeah.
All those angry people that were.
It's good, I mean, it could be worse.
Yeah, no, that's.
Say, why are you doing this, right? So that's okay.
Yeah, exactly.
So we really, the city really can't have it. We can't really use you or work now on language for that ballot, for that blue book. I mean, is that right?
No, we, we are still going to be working with Kyle in an official capacity through the, until the city adopts on second read the ballot language.
Well, that's my question. I mean, but if we do language for the blue book, we can't.
Well, so we were just debating that. We're going to have to look into that a little further. I don't think the city, I don't think that's an official city function, though. Populated, because there are rules that govern how that language has to be crafted. I don't think it's a city function, but let us look into that a little bit further.
I mean, maybe there's a way around it. I mean, before, at least Kyle's here, at least before you have second reading on it, we can come up with some suggestions.
Yes.
And then whether the campaign committee wants to take them, I don't.
True, yes.
Okay. If there are no other, any other questions or any other thoughts? Thank you, Laura, for all your work, too, in getting the deadlines out for us. Appreciate that.
Thank you all. This has been a fun project.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Next is agenda item eight B, continuation of amendment one and six point two from Council Bill Two Series twenty-twenty-two. Planning Manager Workman, you have the floor.
No formal presentation for this item, Mr. Mayor. Just reemphasize the recommended motion to continue. The, the proposed amendments, if you recall, we brought forward a series of housekeeping amendments earlier this year. Two of those were continued specifically rated, related to horses and other agricultural activity. We took the proposed language to the Planning and Zoning Commission in June. They voted to continue that until their July hearing, not because of any flaws with the language or anything like that. They wanted to have a more robust discussion in general about code amendments with the rest of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can tell you, last week, Planning and Zoning Commission heard the amendments that you will hear and voted unanimously to recommend approval for the new language. So we just couldn't meet the packet deadlines and the minutes and all that kind of stuff in order to bring it to you this evening, so.
So one quick question. I'm happy to make this motion to continue. I know that two people, myself being one of them, will be absent from the August sixteenth meeting, and I'm wondering if, if that's, yeah, Option and I aren't here. And so to Randy and Dan, you know, are you cool with that? Or would you rather move it to a later meeting so that more people can be here, or?
And that's a, that is totally council's call. I just want to make sure that council's aware of other council members who are going to be absent at subsequent meetings.
Okay.
Well.
Are we just, yeah.
I, I, trust me, it's.
Yeah, a puzzle.
Council can move it to whatever date council so chooses, but.
Yeah.
So we, we need four votes to pass this?
We'll have a quorum, right, but it's.
Yeah, we'll have a quorum. It looks like currently September sixth, that meeting. I haven't heard from anyone who's not going to be here.
Okay, is that agenda already totally packed, though, or?
Yeah, we've got some stuff on that one.
Well, you know, I guess I'll just defer, like.
You know, it's mostly presentations and consent agenda, so we could put this under new business.
And if it's for an ordinance, you need four on final passage, which is second reading. Final passage.
Right, well, we're not going to have two at the, we're not, we're going to be missing two people at both of those meetings.
Do you want to be involved in this discussion?
I don't, I don't.
I don't know that, I don't, I mean, Paul, is there, is there any urgency to this?
No, sir.
Well, we will have, but to, I guess to that point, to Kathy's point, I'll be here for the first discussion.
And then absent for the second.
And then absent for the second, and I think you'll be absent for the first.
I'm here for, I'm here for the August sixteenth and sixth.
Okay, both of those. So, so, okay, anyway, anyway, but, okay, Option, we'll just go with it. I think it's. I move to continue amendment number one and six point two of Council Bill Two Series two thousand twenty-two until the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting date.
Second.
Have a motion of second. That's just a voice vote, right? Yes, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Next item, agenda item nine A, new business, Planning and Zoning Committee member, Commission Member Terms, City Clerk Gillespie. What, what would you like us to?
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. Staff is bringing for some direction to members of the Planning and Zoning Commission whose terms are ending in September, David Wyman and Earl Holan. They both have expressed their interest in being reappointed to additional three-year terms. So staff is just looking for some direction on whether to appoint them or whether to open it up for applications.
If I could just jump in, I, generally speaking, I am a huge proponent of our policy around, after two terms, we, we just at least advertise and give other people the opportunity. However, in this particular case, given the delays in the master plan and et cetera, et cetera, I, I do feel that perhaps it would be best to reappoint Mr. Wyman and let him see that process through rather than having somebody else join that commission right in the very final stages of, you know, what has now been a three-year process. And then I would be in favor of reappointing Mr. Holan.
Any other thoughts? I, I concur, in particular with Mr. Wyman, with COVID and everything else, and he, and the work he's done, he get, that this is an exceptional kind of case. So is that what you need?
Thank you. That's what I needed.
Okay, reports. I have a brief one. Since our last meeting, we had the CML annual meeting. City Manager and I attended. It was a one-hundred-year celebration with CML, so it was, it was a good party. One, one of the best things about it was all the past presidents, I think, living were there, which we had a meeting, we got to meet with them, and they were, it's interesting. Interesting group and get their perspective on CML over the years. And Sam Mamet was there, of course, and all the other, other guys. So it was, and I think that, I, I was, I'm sorry, I went to meetings all the time, so I didn't get to see much of the presentations, but I. get to see much of the presentations, but I understand they were pretty good, pretty good programs this year, too. After that, I think, oh, Councilor Wheel and I went, and the City Manager went to the Arapahoe County State of the County presentation at the airport. It was the first ever, I think, right? It was pretty good. They, you know, had the thing, I think it's a good thing for them to do, particularly in, right now, with the issues that they're facing with tri-county health, or establishing, basically, no more tri-county health as of January 1st, and trying to create their own health department. They got a big issue there, and that's a major issue. And then, they have with the 18th Judicial District, there's another huge issue about how they're going to do that and separate from the 23rd, which will be the new Elbert and the other county, and then Repose, also married to 18th. Anyway, they have, they have a lot on their plate, and they have some of the experienced commissioners are fraternally limited, too, which is kind of sad, because they really brought a lot of knowledge and institutional knowledge to the board. Let's see, tomorrow, I have lunch with the South Metro Mayor's, Littleton is hosting that one, so we'll get back together. On the 27th, the Hamden Mobility and Safety Citizens Advisory Board is meeting, too, and that was, those are some interesting meetings. And I think Jay was in on the first one, right? And I know that they've done some surveys, and they're trying to get information. I think we ought to respond to those. And I know that they've talked about one of the issues, I was on vacation, I missed the last one, when they talked, but I know, I saw the minutes, they talked about cut-through traffic in Cherry Hills Village. So, they are, they are, it is an issue that I raised in the first meeting, and they're cognizant of, so, and they're doing some numbers on it, too. So, I was interested to see some of that information, and we can maybe report--
Well, and related to that, just for anybody watching on the internet or watching this later, there is a survey that's out for the general public. It's my understanding from some informal conversations that Cherry Hills Village residents have done a fair job of getting some responses in there, and they actually just announced they're extending the deadline for the additional round of comments until, do you remember, until July 24th. So, I would recommend to any resident out there listening, let your voice be heard.
EngagedEnglewood.gov is the URL.
Yeah.
And we do have the direct link right on the homepage of the website.
Of our website, yeah, that's great. That's super. Okay, on our website. Yeah, Englewood is taking the lead in this, because obviously, they have the most interest and they're invested in the Hamden and 285 through their, their city. We're also, as far as CML's going, we're scheduling, continuing discussions with folks about legislative initiative on undergrounding and looking at that statute again, we, you know, we talked about before, there's a statute that prohibits competitive bidding on undergrounding projects, and we're still looking at legislative solutions to that, and we're talking with folks and having meetings on that. We're also, we're also in discussions with Metro Mayor's Caucus and CML, discuss revisiting construction liability issues, and a big concern to the mayor is that at the annual meeting of the Metro Mayor's Caucus, the number one issue is affordable workforce housing. And part of the issue, and part of the stumbling block to that is builders aren't building owner-occupied multifamily housing anymore. It's just not, it's just not happening. And so, and the reasons for that are a lot, but litigation liability and construction defect litigation is a big part of it, and some steps have been taken before to do that, but I think there's a lot of interest in the mayor's. This is a nonpartisan mayor's issue, right? Every mayor wants, wants more workforce housing to, that, that's in the middle income, like 80 to 120% of AMI, adjusted median income, so that we have workforce housing for the nurses and teachers and people who live in your community. Every mayor is on board with that, and we're just looking for ways to do it. There was some legislation that we discussed, I just mentioned last time, that's going to make some funds available at low, low interest rates for rental, construction rental housing, so that's good. But the big issue really is how to, how to increase the stock of owner-occupied housing in our community. So, we'll, we'll take a look at all those issues, and that's going to be probably the number one issue for the Metro Mayor's Caucus coming forward next year. That's my report.
Thank you. I just, I don't really have much to report. I have a question for Kathy, I think. Frida, good job reporting on the Tomcat Tactical issue in Greenwood Village. I appreciate reading your continual dialogue and stories about that and learning about it. I guess I have a question about how that relates to our village. Do we have a policy or a law about commercial gun sales in Cherry Hills? In home, sorry?
But we do have commercial businesses, like, you can't--
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
So, the scenario for those, I assume everyone knows what's happening? Guy Jason Pratt owns a company called Tactical, Tomcat Tactical, and he sells guns out of his home, and he's licensed to do it, and he's registered, and all his papers are in order, and I've met him, I've actually transacted business with him. And prior to any of this stuff happening, to him becoming a big to-do in the Greenwood Village community, but it, it gets me thinking, if we ever had the same instance, what's our position on it? If we had somebody open up in, you know, I guess the most aggressive scenario would be in our more dense part of the community in your neighborhood, if somebody opened up a commercial firearms sales store out of their home, and we're selling guns out of their home. Right now, I'm guessing, it is a legal and approved use that we would have no say in that process. And I'm not suggesting whether I'm for or against that. Most of you probably know my position on that and where I would stand on that, but I do think that if we like our current existing policy on that, then we leave it alone, and if we don't, we maybe should address it before it becomes an issue. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Brown?
I don't really have anything to report, but I did just, and maybe the chief was going to mention it in his report, so I don't want to steal your thunder, but I did notice from your report the conviction of the person accused of Ms. Quail's murder back from the 80s. And so, I just wanted to give a shout out to Chief Tovary, former Chief Tovary, and the entire Cherry Hills Police Department and Arapahoe County and everyone who worked on that. I'm sure that is, finally provides some closure to that family.
The big topic, excuse me, Dr. Cog, RTC, the Regional Transportation Committee and the Board tomorrow night is greenhouse gases. We're still having trouble meeting the targets, and they keep going back and trying to enhance the model to incorporate things they believe are real, but we still have a gap. And if we continue to have a gap, adverse impact to the region, the funding will be more or less limited to projects that demonstrate that they're greenhouse gas producer, reduction projects. So, it's, it's, it's some fairly serious constraints if we can't meet it. So, they're exploring a whole variety of different things, but so far, still a fairly significant gap. And that's all I have.
No report.
And before we move on to, I would like to say the Villager can help us on this, our tax issue. I mean, I would like to meet with the editor of the Villager and maybe discuss our tax issue and see if we can get the support of that, that publication as well. Mr. City Manager?
Sure, I'll start with Directors. Doug, do you want to, if you have any report?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to let Council know, staff is really in the thick of it for forming the 2023 budget right now, and I've been encouraged by the dedication and innovation of ideas that are coming through from each department, and then we'll bring those to the City Manager. And we also learned recently that the city received Government Finance Officer Certificate of Excellence for the 2022 budget. So, we hope to carry that torch in the future as well, but a lot of that was from the staff and also former Director Sager's effort in that area, so kudos to everybody who was involved in that.
A couple of things real quick. If you haven't met him already, Jan Paycheck is our new planning and building permit technician. He started with us July 5th. We're very excited to have him on board. He's picking it up very quickly during our busiest time of the year. So, if you call in for community development, say hi to Jan. Also, on the 27th of this month, we have our next CAT meeting for the master plan update. At that meeting, we're going to be providing them with the kind of outline or the skeleton of, if you will, of the entirety of all of the chapters, and it's really going to be a discussion with them of what did we miss, what do we need to add, that kind of stuff. And then, the next week, on August 2nd, you'll see on the draft agenda in front of you, we have a study session with City Council in order to give you guys an update of where we're at and where we're headed with that. Our hope is that we can report that the CAT gave us a real good thumbs up, and we will direct the consultant to start to make it look less like a skeleton document and more like a formal final document. Again, it won't be final at that stage, but we'll start to insert some images and things like that as we, as we move through that process. So, stay tuned to August 2nd for more information.
Thank you. And Mayor Putnam, thank you for your recognition and the good work done by the members of the Police Department. You should know that there is, as expected, an increased interest from a variety of media sources on that case. We had folks in today from Dublin, Ireland, who flew 24 hours to interview members of staff on that particular case. They are associated to a CBS affiliate, and they will be highlighting the excellent work done by members of the department and the District Attorney's Office, as well as Paul Azon from, I think it was Good Morning America at one point. She has a crime TV show now, and her staff will be here over the next few weeks, and so we are prepared and working alongside the District Attorney to navigate that process. But there will be an increased media scrutiny, but in the most positive ways around that. And then, lastly, over the next several months, the Police Department will be excited to share a launch of a variety of community programs and engagement activities. Of mention are the ones already scheduled for August, so August 2nd, Tuesday, two weeks from tonight, National Night Out, 4:30 to 7:30 here at John Mead Park. And then, toward the end of the month, on Wednesday, the 24th of August, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., will be Coffee with a Cop at the Police Department. Thank you.
Just a couple additional events in August. We also have movie night on August 20th and candidate information session on August 9th. It'll be here from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And then, staff did receive the initiative petition for charter amendment from Laura Christman and Company, working on going through all those signatures, and we'll probably have a certification of sufficiency for council soon.
Sorry, Laura, quick question. I know I'm planning on attending that information session on the 9th. When, is that when the petitions are officially available, right? And then, when are they due back to you?
Sure. So, I'll have the candidate information packets, including the petition, ready first thing in the morning on August 9th, but also at the candidate information session. Nomination petitions are due back to me by 4:30 on the 29th, so you have 20 days to, the candidates have 20 days to circulate.
And Councilor Gallagher is coming, too? Is that--
Yeah.
Terrific. I think that's a great, great plan.
Just a couple of quick updates. I like going last, because council members will say some of mine, and then the directors will say some of mine, and my list gets really tiny, and it works out well. Just a quick update on Quincy Farm. As Council might recall, the MOU required them to submit their draft of the annual plan to staff originally by July 31st. They have been exploring elements of their approach that they feel are critical, including access onto Quincy Farm, and I think some of the feedback they've received from open lands has forced them to dig into that issue a lot more. And so, after talking with them and looking at our schedule, I think we figured out a way for them to submit later than we had originally anticipated, but still getting in front of City Council in September instead of August. So, it will just be one month later. It's with good reason, though. It's, it's so that they can not come to you with a rushed plan that they haven't had a chance to fully think through, and we'll still have plenty of time before 2023 kicks in. So, heads up on that. You might have heard from any of your constituents regarding the Chip Seal project that's been underway. We are about 70% through with that. I think down on Viking in the southwest part of town is the only part that's left. We should be done on Friday. So, if you do get any calls from concerned residents or just wondering what's going on, hang tight, we're almost there. The, I don't, I don't think the mayor mentioned the I-25 in Bellevue--
I mentioned that last time, but it's good to mention for Dan.
Yeah, okay. So, they, we had the, the most recent, you're right, you did talk about that last time, the most recent version of the meeting with the committee, the Executive Committee for the I-25 in Bellevue interchange project, whereby they, Denver, in essence, vetoed this split Diamond Plus option. And so, they had a number of options of going forward, all of them were versions of going back to the spooey, in essence. That's, I'm oversimplifying it, that's a, that's a gross generalization. If the committee, especially the staff, watches this video later, I apologize. But in essence, that's really what it was, and I think there was a great deal of frustration and pushback from Arapahoe County and specifically Greenwood Village, but at this point, I'm not sure what are options there's going to be. So, I thought the mayor did an excellent job of stating the village's position, which I wasn't there for the very first Executive Committee meeting, but my guess is our sentiments remain unchanged throughout. So, from a, from a Cherry Hills Village perspective, it's actually a pretty good outcome. So, it costs a lot of money to get back here.
Come full circle.
Yeah, so, and then, you know, I had three other items that everybody else covered, so that is it for me.
Sorry, before you, before you hand over the mic or we conclude, can you give us an update on 90 Mead Lane?
Yes, so, we had a contact, we originally were trying to get, now, I haven't talked to Jay since I've got back, because he's been out yesterday and today, so there may be more news, but when I left, we were trying to work with a contact that we had in the real estate world to try and get some good estimates to bring back to you, likely in an executive session format, under a real estate transaction.
Estimates on value?
Yes.
Okay.
Potential sale.
So, you can have a report for us maybe for the next meeting? Not, not a POV, not a, not an estimate, but an update on where we stand.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a chance we will likely have maybe an estimate for you in the Friday report that gets sent out, so. I'm just not sure what happened on that while I was gone.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll take--
I'm going to adjourn.
Any opposed? No. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next time.